Okay, welcome to Troy Planning Commission meeting for Monday, October 11th. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Erlich?
Here.
Mr. Walkie?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Mr. Cappers?
Here.
Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Here.
All members are present.
Okay, we've had disseminated before us the minutes of our last meeting in September 22nd, or other additions, corrections, or deletions of those minutes. There's a motion to approve, is there support for the motion?
I support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they stand accepted. Okay, next, we have Historic District application for demolition of 112-118 West Main Street. Now we come to that part of the agenda which is the most difficult for us as Planning Commission members. During the past two years, the Planning Commission has reviewed over 200 pages of submitted reports, emails, testimonials, and opinions of others. We have received numerous phone calls and texts, the last of which I received last night at 9:30 PM, not to mention the face-to-face comments while we were about our personal business. The Planning Commission takes these matters very seriously. It is composed of an elected official, salaried staff member, and five unpaid volunteers who have the love of the city at heart. In going about its business of the Planning Commission, it's unusual that public comment is permitted on agenda items. But we felt this matter was so important that we opened the floor to public comment, and did so for over two hours at our last meeting, keeping the floor open until no one else came forward with comments to make. Even after that meeting, we still received emails, letters, and opinions, and have reviewed them all. Now it's up to the Planning Commission to conduct its business, so no public comments will be received at this meeting, and I will ask that all of you respect the process, so refrain from clapping, booing, and yelling at them. That being said, if any of the Commission members wish to ask a question of the applicant or any other person, just a minute, of any other person else in order to assist in the decision-making process, then that person will be asked to respond on a specific matter addressed to that person. It's on the table, do we have a motion to remove it from the table?
Some.
Is there support for the motion? Please call the roll.
I'm sorry, you need the motion.
Mr. Titterton made the motion, Mr. McGary seconded.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Mr. Walkie, did the Law Director adequately address your legal concerns at the last meeting? Staff, we received your reports and your supplemental report to the applicant's request for demolition, do you have anything else to add?
I do not.
Okay. Any questions of staff, either on the supplemental report or any of the other two reports or more reports that were submitted? Okay, now the matter is open for discussion and action. Anyone want to lead off in the discussion? Okay, well, I'll get started. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I get to say my two cents first, how's that? First of all, it bothers me that the staff has submitted to Planning Commission different reports. The current report is to recommend approval of demolition, while the recommendation about February 24th was against the demolition. And I quote the report at that time, "due to the owner arguing for adopting a less-than-desirable reuse plan." It goes on to say, quote, "The demolition permit with the approved certificate of appropriateness does not require a rescue plan with," and I emphasize, "definite plans for reuse of the site," and that cites Section 1143.22, 10, 2, and 3 of the Troy codified ordinances. "The purpose of these sections is to mitigate any adverse effects of the proposed removal upon the property, the streetscape, and the historic district." The first recommendation of staff goes on to say, quote, "is staff's opinion that raising the structure and not replacing it will leave an obvious gap in the streetscape. Planning Commission should require a rescue plan that meets all of the requirements of the both section, with new construction that would meet the architectural design standards as a condition to demolition." And I agree with the first recommendation. The minimum reuse plan as submitted with the application is inadequate, in my opinion. For that reason alone, I believe the application should be denied, and does not even address the concerns or problems with the applicant's first conditions of the standard for demolition or removal in the ordinances, which must be satisfied by, I emphasize, clear evidence for the ordinance. Who else wants to go ahead and make comments?
Mr. Chair, can maybe the staff address the differences between the February and the current recommendation?
Yes, I believe there was several different reuse plans that were thrown out. The first one was a parking lot, it was the removal of the building, and then put in a, I don't know the exact number, of parking spaces. We felt that wasn't desirable, and that was not a, that was more of a permanent reuse. We feel that seed and straw is more of a, what could be a temporary use. When we looked at former demolition applications of the 11, I think nine of them were seed and straw, which were approved by the Planning Commission, and what that did was allow for future, future opportunities to come before the Planning Commission. And so, our recommendation was to eliminate what could be considered a permanent parking space in lieu of something that could be providing opportunity as a reuse plan, which is what's before you, as seed and straw.
Let me ask you this, if this demolition goes forward, and the reuse plans they stated would be put in grass, okay, how long could it stay in grass? I mean, there's no time period, right?
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments?
At an earlier meeting, I asked what the options were available to the county's CBO. Have we gotten any indication from them what they plan on doing if this were denied?
I have not received anything from them what their future plans are. The last update I received, which was the same update we had before, is that they had an order, adjudication order 0017, and that was being acted upon, it was submitted over to the county prosecutor for review.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I just have a question, Tim. Do we have previous reuse that was seeded and grass lots before further development took place?
Yes, we did some research to see kind of a precedent that was set with demolition applications, we went back to 2010. There were 11 applications that were submitted for demolitions, and counting them out, there are 10 of them that did not have reuse plans other than seed and straw, at the time it was approved by the Planning Commission.
To follow up on that, you used the word precedent. We consider these on a case-by-case basis, so in my opinion, precedent doesn't matter. In addition to that, every one of these cases after review, not every one of them, there are a couple of exceptions, but most of those cases after review ended up in landscaping or what I would call green space, and it'd be the best use of the property, in my opinion, anyway.
I would think, when I was looking back at them, most of them were, had new buildings put on, the soup kitchen, the lens building, parking lot expansions, I guess things of that nature.
Yeah, the old Kerber House, the two on the Hayner block were all torn down, and they're in the landscape.
Correct, those two are, yep.
Any other questions?
So of, so of those 11, three of them ended up in green space? I know about the South Cherry Street lot, but weren't the Hayner ones parking lots?
Those were turned into parking lots with landscaping, yes.
With landscaping.
One of them is a park, one of them is green space.
And of...
Or green space.
Yes, Mr. Titterton.
Of those 11, you said 10 of them were green space reuse plans, how many of those were mid-block versus corner demos?
Nine of them were mid-block, two of them were corners.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any other matters of discussion? Mr. Westmeyer?
Yeah, well, I think it's a very difficult decision, I would like to make a motion. I would move that the Planning Commission grant the application for a certificate of appropriateness for the demolition and removal of the structure 112 through 118 West Main Street, known as Tavern Building, based on the fact that the applicant has provided adequate proof of substantial economic hardship, providing clear evidence of at least two conditions, which outweigh the historic, the architectural, and the cultural value of the Tavern Building. Said authorization, I would include the following conditions. One, the rescue plan shall include restoration of the site with landscaping consisting of seed and straw or sod, until such time in the future as the property owner comes before the Planning Commission with further requested site improvements. Two, the rescue plan shall also include the salvage, if feasible, of any architectural materials that document the historical nature of the building, including but not limited to historical plaques located on the interior or exterior of the building. Three, said certificate does not extend to or authorize the demolition or removal of any party or common wall. Four, the applicant shall provide notice and duties to the adjacent property owners of its requirement to repair, weatherproof, remediate any shared wall or walls, so that said wall or walls are left in safe condition. And the fifth, the applicant shall remediate any exposed walls by sealing, repairing, and/or waterproofing the walls, roofing services and/or foundations that shall comply with all legal duties owed to neighboring property owners. The applicant shall file an application with the Planning Commission to receive approval for the final treatment of any exposed walls left after demolition.
There's a motion, is there support for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Motion being seconded? You have written something, now maybe you should have this too after this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the roll. Affirmative vote is for Mr. Titterton appropriate.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
No.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
No.
Mr. Walkie?
No.
Four to three, the motion does pass.
Okay, the next matter on the agenda, Historic District application of 301 Public Square Southeast for exterior painting, does that happen?
Yes, I do, thank you. David Fair, owner of David Fair on the Square, is requesting a historic review from the Planning Commission to consider the exterior modification of paint on the building located 301 Southeast Public Square. The OHI form describes the building as a three-story brick building with Italianate commercial elements.
Okay, sorry for the interruption, go ahead, proceed.
The OHI form describes the building as a three-story brick building with Italianate commercial elements, it was erected in 1904. The building is on the National Register, and the Southeast Public Square streetscape includes three exposed brick façades located 2 East Main, 221 Southeast Public Square, and 301 Public Square. The request is for exterior paint modifications. The color, primary color would be oak moss, or oak moss, sorry. The trim color would be relaxed khaki, and the accent color would be enduring bronze. Those have been included in the packet. The front and side of the building had exposed brick on the second and third floors, that was untouched, however, it was primed without the Planning Commission review. When staff noticed the primer was placed on the building, we also noticed the presence of synthetic caulking in between the mortar joints. We did ask the applicant to prevent from doing any further exterior modifications until Planning Commission had a chance to weigh in. We look back at the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, and it states that applying paint or other coatings to such stucco, to masonry that has been historically unpainted or uncoated to create a new appearance is not recommended. It further states that repointing with a synthetic caulking compound is not recommended. Because of this, staff does concur with the standards for rehabilitation, that applying paint or other coating should not be applied to the original exposed brick, and we encourage Planning Commission to require the removal of the paint of the front facade and restore the protected, and restore and protect the exposed brick using the gentlest means possible. Staff does recommend denial of the proposed paint modification, based on the following: one, it detracts from the historic integrity of the building and district; two, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties does not recommend paint or other coatings on masonry that has historically been unpainted; and three, the paint conceals character-defining features of the building.
Any questions of staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just explain to me, we've had other buildings in the downtown painted, what is the difference here?
Correct, what we have looked at, at least recently, I can't speak for buildings that were painted in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, what we've looked at is when we've kind of taken this under, under consideration, which is the Secretary of Interiors, I think that was done in 2000, it was looked at, what we do is, is we typically meet with the applicants when they submit applications, we get back to them. In this case, we received an application, I think, on Thursday afternoon, and on Saturday, primer went on the building, didn't have a chance to come before us. In addition to that, we do have a lot of consultations with applicants. Harons Market, they proposed to paint the building, we told them we would prefer them not to and give a negative recommendation, they altered their plans. We did the same thing to the TDN building, they were starting to paint part of the building, we told them we would not recommend painting the exposed brick, they did paint a structure in the back that was later a newer addition, not the original, so we've done that historically. We did allow, the only one I can think of that we have allowed in the recent past, was the, where Muller Brubarn is, the church, they had some damage to some bricks on the bottom, they wanted to propose painting the entire structure, we recommended against that, and instead, they painted a couple of feet at the bottom to kind of hide some deteriorated bricks, so it wouldn't stick out in the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So just to clarify, this is one of those cases where they started to do the work without getting the permit, which we are correcting that in the P-Schedule update to counts.
That is correct, yes.
But as a result of some action taken today, the applicant could be forced to go ahead and remove what he's already put on.
That is correct.
How difficult is that going to be?
So, we will ask them to not stand blast it, because it's not recommended in the Secretary of Interior Standards. They provide several different options, which we would provide to the applicant, stating that it meets the Secretary of Interior Standards for removal of paint.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. McGary?
Now, if we, if we follow the recommendation to deny this, then the applicant has to come back to the other painting and other decorative work that he plans to do?
Yes, if he proposes anything other than this, he would have to come back with a new application.
Now, if we deny this application, though, he will have to come back, right? Even come back with the same request?
I would have to look into the code, I don't know if there's a time, he has to wait to come back with the same exact request. I guess he could comply with the request of the Planning Commission, and then nothing further would be needed from him unless he wants to make any further exterior modifications.
Correct.
Talk to me a little bit about the condition of the building before they put the primer on, was there paint on there then?
There was not paint on there, in your packet, we have a picture from Google Earth that we found, which was, I think, from 2019, and it shows the building in the state it was in before he painted it over the weekend.
Okay. On Agave and Rye, was that painted prior, before they painted it?
Yes, it had been painted, La Fia's had painted the building blue before they painted.
Okay.
So the, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
So, maybe you answer this, the only one that we've done in recent history was Muller Brubarn, and that was the bottom?
That is correct.
So, none of the buildings that are painted now, we have not given permission for, they were already painted?
To be fair, we, the city, the Planning Commission may have done it back in the 80s and 90s, I do not know when those buildings received approval, but at some point, either the Planning Commission or the Board of Architecture Review, which used to have this, these items come before them, before the Planning Commission, they may have given approval.
As I recall, we recently did approve a building for Wade Westfall that had not been painted, however, the brick was in terrible shape, so I'm not sure what shape the brick is on this particular building.
That's true, that's that building next to the courthouse along the Water Street side.
Corner, short.
Short water.
Is that not painted?
That was not painted prior to this, and they're in the process of painting it now?
But again, the, the brick in that situation was badly deteriorated, and I've looked at what we have here, and quite frankly, with the patching that they've done, I can't tell whether this is deteriorated or not.
Is there a problem with the color schemes, or is there a problem with just the fact that it's painted on a surface that wasn't painted before?
The painting on the surface that wasn't painted before.
I just, is there a worry that if they, if they're not allowed to paint it, and they go back, and they have to take off what they've put on, is that damage, create additional damage then, that it's going to have to, I mean, I know it's going a little deeper.
Yeah, that, that damage could occur.
And that's why the recommendations, the...
Gentlest means possible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can you speak to me about the caulk? I don't understand that either. They're using the wrong, they used caulk they should not have used?
Yeah, when you do historical preservation of restoring different buildings, there's guidelines, if you will, that state what items should be utilized when you're doing caulking, when you're doing brick replacement, if you're tuck pointing, things of that nature, they give recommendations on what to use and what not to use. Some of that could be because maybe this particular caulking will trap in water, moisture, which then will lead to further deterioration underneath it, so we've had that happen throughout the community, it gives recommendations based on items like that.
Is that going to be able to be removed?
The caulking, I do not know.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Do we have, do we have the actual paint charts? Because they, you bring the pictures?
The photocopies didn't come out.
Not at all. It looks like...
I do not have them right here, we probably have them downstairs.
Gray and cream, and I know that's not...
Yeah, they're rendering, pretty much masked, if it, I don't know how it came out in the packet.
See the green?
But they had kind of like a proposed, current proposed pictures.
Yeah, this came out grayer, but I've seen it in person, I know that's a, I don't know, it's a modest green, it's not a real bright green, like at least one other building downtown. The complementary color, the trim color, is a cream color?
Yeah, it looks to be kind of a creamish, like a khaki color.
Okay, and it will be, and that will be the trim on the windows, what else?
Yeah, it would be the trim on the windows, and then any transoms that go by, kind of see it labeled out here, where they have them.
So, Tim, when did we...
The Secretary of Interiors, when we had, what I have, based on my documents, when this O-42-2000 was the, I guess the 2000 zoning code, with that, it refers to the Secretary of Interior Standards, it's also in the current zoning code, that it says that when doing reconstructions and treatment of historic buildings, it should be, should follow as close as possible to.
So since that point, we would not have allowed painting of brick structure?
Unless there was damage to other bricks or other items, yes.
That's a guideline.
But this is on the National Register of Historic Buildings.
That is correct.
Did you say why he went ahead and started the process before it had approval?
He did not, Austin, who is not here today, did reach out to him, spoke with him, asked him to cease the activity on the building, and he said he would comply, and he hung up.
Was he aware of the standards from the Secretary of the Interior?
I don't know that anybody here is.
I couldn't answer that question.
Okay, alternatives, I think the alternatives are, we go with the recommendation, or we can permit the action to continue, or we can go ahead and permit the action to continue with conditions, if you wanted to go ahead and impose conditions.
Can you suggest what you're thinking of as conditions?
Well, the conditions might be, okay, we like the color scheme, the problem is, I don't know that enough about the National Register to say, if we permit painting of a building on the National Register, that we're not violating some sort of law or grant, can you help us out there? You're probably not versing it either.
Yeah, I mean, we could reach out, I mean, with the State's office in that regard, but off the top of my head, I don't know what duties that the placement on the register would do to a body's action to the Planning Commission.
The conditions I was thinking of was maybe permit, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but as a condition, you could say, okay, you need to replace all that synthetic caulking with whatever is recommended for a building material, so that this continues to last for another 100 to 200 years, and not have to worry about water intrusion. That might be one condition. Another condition was maybe we don't like paint on the limestone lintels, so that, that might be another condition, you'd have to remove all of that. If we're satisfied with the color palette, then the color would be okay. We have taken a lot of steps in downtown Troy to make it more colorful and vibrant, so, and for Pete's sakes, I've gone to David Fair personally, I don't need to abstain on this, but gone to him personally for decorator ideas, I think his color palette choices are something that I would probably say are fitting for that area, but that might be one avenue that we want to do. The fourth alternative might be to say, okay, let's go ahead and table a matter until the next time around, and have our Law Director contact the historic, the people who are in charge of the National Register of Historic Buildings, to see if we're way off base in even considering it. I don't know.
Would that be a question for the Law Director or for staff?
I don't care who answers the question, as long as we get an answer, if that's a concern to the Commission. Mr. Titterton, you're holding your microphone, if you want to speak, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I guess sometimes it's better not to ask the question if there's really no good solution if you get the wrong answer, and in this case, the cat's out of the bag, it's not, it's not great that he started to do the work, but, you know, if, if we heard from the state that, oh yeah, you really, you shouldn't do this, I mean, I, it's, it's not a law, it's a guideline, and it's a pretty strict guideline when we have the opportunity to influence it, I'm just concerned that at this point, if we say, oh no, you can't do this, you're going to have to reverse it, and then strip it, strip it back to bare paint, or to bare brick, could it cause more damage doing that than, you know, protecting what's already been done, and maybe, I like your condition about the caulking, I agree, I don't know, synthetic caulking versus some other technique for historic buildings, but certainly, it may, it may burden the project a little bit, but, you know, it was done before we had a chance to really dialogue around it, so at a minimum, I would think that that would be a good condition. This is the only building on that face of the quad that is not painted, is that correct, or is there another? I'm not talking about Harons, I'm talking about, you know, David and the insurance and the Caroline.
The Caroline building is painted, mm-hmm.
But after that, it's not painted?
I guess if you're just in that specific area, you'd be the only one not painted. The ones on the southeast, Harons, and the building recently purchased by Gustavo Benindes, those have exposed brick that have not been painted.
Right. I consider that a separate elevation.
Mr. Chairman, I asked the question about the caulk, as we recently had come before us, the Overfield Tavern, and some damage that had been caused by materials that had been on the Overfield Tavern that should not have been there, correct? And it caused water damage because it was the wrong siding, so, but I know nothing about billowing, and I don't know how you remove caulk once it's in there.
Good question. Mr. Westmeyer?
I guess, I mean, I'm disappointed that they started without getting the approval, but I'm, I'm glad people are...
but I'm, I'm glad people are continuing to make investments in the downtown, so I'm pleased with that. I would rather work what you're saying, Al, in regards to trying to find a way, if there's a way that we can table it and then get back to the owner and work through maybe those pieces that maybe we can meet in the middle in regards to, like you said, if there is some painting allowed but some not, and in regards to the caulking that's been done, that it's either updated to the proper amount. But I, I'd like to work with them. You know, I don't want other people to continue to do that, thinking we're going to work with everyone. But I, I think you're right. He's got some great ideas in regards to ways he's trying to do the building. So, I, I would look to table that we can reconvene with him or the, our...
Second. There's a motion to table, second, no discussion. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Okay, so the staff will be tasked with the charge to contact the applicant, and your most egregious concerns about his application should be addressed and see how they will address those and have him come back before the Planning Commission.
We will reach out, thank you.
Thank you. While we're on the subject of, could you just tell me that one of the statements was the paint conceals the character-defining features of the building? What defining features?
They talked about the exposed brick.
Just the brick?
Just the brick itself.
Okay. There's no gargoyles or anything else like that?
Nothing like that.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is revised final record plan for Troy Christian Schools. Does staff have a report?
Yes, sir. So, attached is a copy of the record plan for the Troy Christian Plan Development located at 700 South Dorset Road. The plan development process requires three steps for approval. First step is the general plan, which was revised but previously approved by Planning Commission and City Council, O-432021. The second step is final development plan, which must be approved by Planning Commission before the final and third step of approving the record plan. Staff recommends the Planning Commission provide a positive recommendation at City Council to accept the proposed record plan as there are general accordance with the approved general plan, with the condition that the subdivision regulation final plat notes 112304B and C is added to the final plat prior to going to council.
Any questions of staff? Commission want to take any action on a recommendation to council? Move for an affirmative recommendation?
I'll second that.
Motion, support, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Staff have anything else to come before the commission today?
Nothing today, thank you.
Commission members want to discuss anything else?
The only thing I'd add, I would like to, when is our goal to look at our rules in regards to maybe penalties and that, when we've talked about reviewing our, if someone goes past the...
The subdivision regulations have been before staff for a couple of months now.
Yeah, it's not subdivision regulations, it's updating the fee schedule.
Well, subdivision regulations have been out there too.
They are. Those are, those are being presented, but it's really the fee part of it. And that will, that is being discussed tonight at council committee for action by council next week.
Okay. Answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else to come before the commission? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second, all those in favor, second, if they can aye?
Aye.
If they've opposed, we stand in adjournment.